I call to order the February 23rd, 2016, Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please join in, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are at Citizens Comments. If you're here for the public hearing on the view protection overlay, that's later in the meeting, but if you have other issues you'd like to comment on, please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. Mr. Palmer, are you wanting to speak on the, I see you're on the signup sheet for later.
No, actually, I'm wanting to make sure I have the opportunity to make Citizens Comments.
Okay, you have a chance for Citizens Comments, it's outside the public hearing. We'll hear from you.
It's outside.
Okay, please step forward.
of Property Owners. What I just passed out to the council are my specific objections to the two ordinances that are on your business item agendas, 7B and 7C. I presented the same testimony to the Planning Commission back in December, and the Planning Commission, at their public hearing, tabled their consideration of the ordinances, not just on the basis of my testimony, but on the testimony of several of the Planning Commission members. I object to the ordinances, and I've gone to specific lengths to comment on many, many provisions of both your procedures ordinance and your subdivision code. What disturbs me the most is that there's been no effort to empanel a stakeholders group to review the ordinances, and when you go through them, you'll find, as I have, that it's a mishmash. The previous attorney tried to marry, excuse me, marry the old ordinance you had, the one that was in effect prior to August of last year, with the quote "model ordinances" that she had developed for the Washington Association of Cities, and the product is a mess. And I'm happy to go through each and every line of the ordinances, if you like, but I have done that in written form. My handwriting may be a little bit hard to read, but I think it is legible enough that you can see. I gave you one copy of what's on the disk, but the disk allows you to see all of my comments, but you'd have to print them out, either city staff or your own printer, whichever. And my handwritten comments are in red, so there won't be any particular reason that they're not evident. The whole thing has been a disingenuous process. Last November, the city council said that before they would consider the ordinance, they wanted to empanel a stakeholders group. They didn't do that. They sent it off to the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission tabled it, and now you're going to extend it with no review, and I'm not sure that my comments that I gave the Planning Commission were transmitted to the council before tonight.
Thank you for comments, Mr. Palmer. I know that our process going forward is going to be, to engage the stakeholders as we work through this process. Others wishing to speak? Okay, Ms. Harmon.
I wanted to talk about, at the meeting on Saturday that you had, it was kind of evident that most of you don't care about the derelict building ordinance, and I think that our city needs to at least have something written down about derelict buildings, but I think you also need to develop a process. You had this room filled with business people downtown that feel that their businesses are suffering because of, in particular, Myries and boards flying off of it, and I know that the mayor has talked with Mr. Samadpur, and things are supposed to be coming down the line, but it's already into six months from the time that you started saying that you were talking and working with him. So how long does it take to start having some changes? But Mr. Allen is always talking about, we need to have a process for everything, so everything is treated the same. This would be the same thing. Maybe it starts with the mayor contacting whoever owns the building that's a derelict, but you should have a process in place, and if nothing happens in the end, then you have an ordinance that could finally be used, but right now, there's nothing there. So there's nothing behind it, and maybe a year's the length of time that we give people to make it. It's just, I think you need to develop a process that ends with an ordinance on derelict buildings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to speak this evening? Yes, sir, in the back. Ms. Whittleton, go ahead.
Alyssa Whittleton. My comment was also in regard to the derelict building ordinance. The Public Properties Committee, earlier on, before it became the Land Use Committee, had tabled the draft ordinance, so that it was to be reviewed February with the Land Use Committee, but I went to that meeting and nothing happened, there was no reference to that, and so I'm questioning, has it been tabled? What tools do we have to protect ourselves from getting in the situation of, you know, putting up with these sorts of conditions? So my question is, where is it these days? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name's John Allen. I appeared before you here and addressed you last month with a plea to install Nike Wings of Victory accessibly and properly, and I think that was done. And somebody on the council or on staff recognized the bigger issue as to why I was here and not talking to somebody on staff in Port Orchard. You now have an ADA coordinator in the city of Port Orchard. My congratulations and compliments.
Thank you.
That really means a lot to the community of people with disabilities.
So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
My second issue, I have just three brief ones. Another compliment to the young lady to my right here, Ms. Reinsen, who, in December, when I brought a code compliance issue up, it was directed to her. She promptly, professionally fixed your council chambers with hearing access signs, and they're now almost in compliance. She did a great job. I enjoyed working with her. My third issue is my compliments to you in the council and to the staff for your microphone discipline. I've attended only four meetings, one in the far past, three in the recent past, and people with hearing loss, whether it be mild or moderate, need the audio system and your help with the microphones. People with profound and severe hearing loss need the hearing assistance equipment, and you're making it very pleasant and very accessible. So again, my third issue, my compliments. I hope you can handle three compliments in one evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll close Citizens Comments. Word approval of the agenda. Anyone wishing to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second?
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the agenda as presented?
I had one thing I wanted to talk about. It's a business item, or item 4C. It's a quick question, normally in the past.
No.
Well, if you wish to discuss it.
Let me explain it. Is it a consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Okay, then you would make a motion to move that consent agenda item to a business item.
Ah, then that's what I will do. Make a motion to move that to a business item.
So I believe what Mr. Donilon has done is he's asked that we move 4C to 7G.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Clausen has made a second. We have a motion to move item 4C to item 7G. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. So we now have an amended agenda. Is there any more discussion of the amended agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the agenda is approved, as amended. We are on to the amended consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to, we don't have any presentations this evening, we are on to the public hearing, and Mr. Bond, I believe this item is yours.
Yes, thank you, and before we begin, I believe that the city attorney needs to have a brief discussion on the appearance of fairness, as this is a quasi-judicial action.
Thank you, yes. So quasi-judicial action is one in which the council is sitting not in its legislative function, but in its judicial function. So there are rules on the appearance of fairness doctrine that we must follow to conduct this hearing. So we have to ask a few questions of the council members to assess whether there is any issue with any of you voting on this issue. So I'm going to ask a few questions of each of the council members, and I'll need each individual council member to answer individually. Before I do so, does anybody have questions about how this process works, how, what it is we're doing here with asking these types of questions? I would ask all council members to give consideration as we're asking these questions, whether you have a demonstrated bias or prejudice for or against any party in the proceedings, a direct or indirect monetary interest in the outcome of the proceedings, a prejudgment of the issue prior to hearing the facts on the record, or an ex parte contact with any individual excluding city staff with regard to an issue prior to the hearing. So keeping those in mind, I'll ask the individual questions. Does any council member have a financial or personal interest in the Berg property? And I'll need individual noes from...
No.
Okay, I see seven noes.
Do you want a thumbs up or thumbs down?
I think a verbal no is good. Does any council member or any immediate family member of a council member stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this exemption request?
No.
No.
Is any council member or any immediate family member of a council member currently employed by an employer that stands to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this exemption request?
Which employers might that be? It's pretty ambiguous.
It's pretty vague. You know, I don't know, I don't, nothing comes to mind. I think the appropriate answer is no. Do I have seven noes on that question?
No.
Is each council member impartial about this request and able to hear and consider the request in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I have seven yeses. Has any council member prejudged this matter, and would therefore be unable to hear and consider the staff report and the testimony tonight in a fair and objective manner?
No.
Okay, I have seven noes on that as well. Now I would like to ask anyone, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to challenge the participation of any of the council members for any reason that relates to the appearance of fairness doctrine. Seeing none, we can turn this back over to Mr. Bond.
I have a question of clarification.
Certainly.
Can you explain what you mean by ex parte communication?
It's if a council member had a discussion with a property owner outside of the presence of the city staff member or another council member.
So a discussion with a neighbor of the property would not factor in?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Oops. Paper's got mixed up here. I turned my stack upside down. The city has received a request for multiple view protection overlay district exemptions from Paul Berg for 803, 809, 815, and 821, Kinsley Lane. Exemptions are authorized under Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 162712 upon findings and conclusions by the city council that demonstrates the proposal meets the criteria for granting. The resolution, which has been prepared in conjunction with this staff report, includes suggested findings based on site visits by city staff and a review of the application and supporting materials. A public hearing notice for the proposal was published, mailed to all residents within 300 feet of the subject properties, and posted at the site indicating that a public hearing would be conducted tonight. Barring any public testimony or evidence presented at the public hearing which contradicts the findings and conclusions which have been included in the attached resolution, city staff recommends the approval of the exemption request because, based on the application and site visits by staff to date, it is city staff's opinion that there are no significant views present or adjacent to the properties in question. However, staff is limited in its ability to demonstrate view impacts or a lack thereof, since it may be necessary to enter private property to do so, and it is possible that evidence or testimony suggesting an impact will be presented in a public hearing. Were this to occur, and depending on the credibility and completeness of the information presented, the city council may want to consider continuing the public hearing so that further research can be conducted by city staff, and after which city staff may or may not revise its recommendation and proposed findings and conclusions of the city council.
Okay, are you ready to open the public hearing? We'll now open the public hearing on this matter. I have two individuals signed up, but I don't believe either one of them is wishing to speak. So I have Al Mahaney, who is here tonight to, in support of the carnival, and he isn't wishing to speak on this matter, and I have William Palmer signed up, who is actually the gentleman that spoke earlier and has left the meeting, so I'm pretty sure that he doesn't want, wish to speak either. So is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak at this public hearing on this matter? None, we'll close the public hearing. You can motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution granting exemption from the view protection overlay district regulations under Port Orchard Municipal Code 16.20.712 to Paul Berg for properties located at 803, I think we may have a typo here, 803, 815, and 821, Kinsley Lane, and adopting findings and conclusions. Were those, one of those addresses bad?
809.
One of them should be 809.
So 803, 809, 803.
809, 815, and 821.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. As the motion maker, Mr. Kichardi, would you like to speak to this motion first?
I have no comments.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to talk about finding D and conclusion E. The last sentence of finding D says, "The view protection overlay district is not addressed in the city's comprehensive plan," and the conclusion for that finding E says, "Granting the exemption request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan." I think it would be better worded if it said, "The exemption request is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan," since it's not addressed in the comprehensive plan. So I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
So the motion in particular was? Could you restate that motion?
That the conclusion E would be worded to read pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code 12, or, I'm sorry, 16.20.712B, granting the Berg VPOD exemption request is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Is not inconsistent.
Is not inconsistent.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the amendment carries. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion of the main motion? Mr. Guarini.
May I ask, the homes that are going to be built, are they going to be facing sideways like the ones behind the development next door? Do they face, which direction do they face? Where does the access come from?
The access, the driveway going into that site that is perpendicular to Cindy, Sydney, excuse me, the houses would be facing south along that access driveway, so they're not facing the Sydney Street.
Okay, so the very, and I'm wondering, right, what will be done along the sidewalk? Is there going to be some kind of fence or landscaping or something that's required?
There's, the only requirement I know, so there was a short plaid approval on this, and all of the conditions came out of the short plaid, and there's an old driveway cut that I believe is to be removed as a condition of the short plaid approval, and then the new driveway cut for the driveway access gets constructed, but as far as landscaping, there's typically not a landscaping requirement for residential developments such as this, and so it would be up to the developer to make any improvements, but he would have to speak to that.
It's really outside of this matter, how a property is going to be landscaped.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, no? Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7A, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code 10.12, parking passes. Ms. Reinsen, I believe that's you.
Good evening, council, mayor. So during the review of the Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.14, Residential Parking Permit Systems, it was discovered that the Kitsap County had been issued permits in error. The permits being issued were not within the provisions of the code, residential parking permit systems, as they were not a resident or a guest of a resident. At the January 19th, 2016 work-study session, staff was directed to update the city's code to allow permits to be issued to the county board volunteers and council members when visiting the Kitsap County Courthouse, administrative building, or city hall when conducting county or city business that is expected to last longer than the posted time limitation on the city streets. Staff has provided a red line ordinance and a draft ordinance for your consideration.
Motion to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mashby?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending the special passes provisions of Chapter 10.12, parking, standing, and stopping of the Port Orchard Municipal Code, Section 140, special passes.
Second that.
Motion and a second, by Mr. Donilon, and any discussion of this item?
Mayor, I do have questions, and maybe it's just trying to group everything together. We refer to folks as motorists, rather broad statement. We were specific when we were talking about it at the work-study, and they're motorists, it seems to be quite open.
That's a good point. I think that could apply to motorcyclists. I mean, it'd have to be something with a motor, I suppose, but is there a specific objection?
Well, as an example, motorists who are visiting city hall to conduct city business expected to last longer than posted time limits. Well, that's just about anybody. And was that the intent?
Well, initially, what we had drafted was very specific, you know, we listed council members, we listed planning commission members, and we had a kind of an exhaustive list. It was at the recommendation of the legal council that we changed the verbiage to this, and it's at the discretion of the mayor's office, which, you know, acts, we've got the prosecuting attorney and defense attorneys that were listed previously, so we had a, the list just got kind of long, so it was going to be more discretionary as kind of the direction of that, but we can change the, you're the body looking at the...
I mean, it's rather long. If you look at motorists who are visiting the Kitsap County Courthouse or administrative business, Duck County Business is wide open. Anybody that drives up to the place is eligible for a pass, and that, maybe the list that we had talked about were jurors and volunteers to their board members, or their boards and things.
If I may speak to that, the original draft of the ordinance was a little bit too limited. This is, ordinances need to be equally applied, so it's not, it wasn't a situation where we could call out the specific individuals we thought were most likely to use this, but I did speak with Ms. Reinsen about the possibility of this being an issue, and it does seem as if most people who are visiting city hall can get in and out within the time limits, so that either the two or the four-hour parking spots outside the building. So it's certain people who are going to be here for longer than four hours conducting city business, which is not, you know, they're not parking there to walk over to another business, they have to be coming to city hall, and it's within the discretion of the mayor to provide a pass, so.
I think what Mr. Clausen's concern is, is we're giving latitude to the County Courthouse that they may issue, based on the language we have here, all their employees permits to park on the street.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part.
And this actually says city clerk is the one that administers it, not the mayor's office.
That's true.
But as far as the county was concerned, the, there were specific functions that we had in mind, the...
The planning commission, the hearing examiner.
Hearing examiner.
Downriver board.
And downriver review board.
And Board of Equalization, I believe.
Yeah, there were four.
Well, at the work-study, I thought we captured it pretty well when we said, you know, the volunteers to their committees and so on, I mean, it's not that long of a list.
Well, I think it's...
If you're a volunteer to a committee, they could have multiple committees up there.
That's true. I think the issue with that, from a legal standpoint, is to call out that certain people get this benefit and other members of the public do not get this benefit, is, makes it applied unequally. So the ordinance needs to apply, so we tried to make it as reasonable as possible that anybody who needs to be going to those, which is generally going to be people like the commissioners and the board members and things like that, but if there are members of the public who would want to go to one of those meetings and need to park, it's one of those things that we'd have to make sure that they aren't being treated unequally, if that makes sense.
How would that be enforced?
Well, it's all through the discretion of the clerk's office, so, I mean, they would come and explain what their business was and why they needed a temporary parking pass.
Can we include the language that clerk's office has that discretionary ability to, we could list the specific ones we know, and then the language could be inserted, can the language be inserted that would give clerk's office the latitude for a guest that isn't mentioned in there? Would that be even-handed?
I think that's something maybe we should, we should talk about and see what's the best way to revise the ordinance, to take these concerns into account.
Mayor? I wonder if this is not...
I wonder if this is not ripe for movement forward. If we're considering a class of business that occurs with the planning commission, for example, or even the hearing examiner, we have a lot of people that attend those functions. And that could be a lot of permits in some instances that we're trying to get out. So I wonder if we ought to continue this.
Is the desire to, it sounds like we need to rework this?
It sounds like it, yeah.
I think it's, it's just the way it's ordered is way too open. And you can't identify specific volunteers getting a special pass for parking. You think it has to be open to anyone and everyone?
Well, there, when I was reviewing this, I was under the impression that there wouldn't necessarily be a lot of citizens who weren't, who weren't, you know, commission members or board members that would be needing this type of pass. If it is the case that this could be opening the city up to way more passes than it could possibly provide, then there is, then there would necessarily be a legitimate reason to narrow the field to, so that, so that what you're trying to accomplish can be accomplished without, without the ordinance being unequal. Because there would, ordinances are supposed to be moving legitimate purposes of the, of the city forward. And if we can do that in a way that addresses this issue without creating, you know, an unfairness for people who don't fit those categories, I think we should try to see if we can do that.
I could see the way this language is written right now. Every attorney that goes up to the courthouse could come down and qualify and ask for a permit. And, you know, that I don't think was the intent of our discussion. It's for certainly jurors who don't have the option to get up and run out of the courtroom to move their car.
Right.
And the county has provisions for the jurors.
Yeah.
This is more, it was the, there was, there was four functions that we were...
Well, this provides for the jurors. Motorists who are serving as jurors or witnesses for municipal district court and superior court may be issued a jurors pass.
That was intended...
That's the current code right now.
Well, I understand. But my, my point is, is that the way that this is currently written, in addition to the jurors, we now have it open to any attorney that wants to go up there for three, four, five hours, or anyone else who has business at the courthouse. And I just think that's just opening it up way too far.
Sherry?
I, I think it's pretty clear that this isn't ready to, to be pushed forward. So I would move that we send this back to our land use committee and to work through our attorney to rewrite this and address some of the concerns shared tonight.
Can we, I think we've got enough.
Yeah.
I got a motion and a second.
I'd like a little more discussion.
I think we need to deal with his, his motion first, then we can, so we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So in terms of the mechanics of new paragraph three, I know that the planning commissioners are appointed, well, on multi-year cycles. So when it talks about they being issued a temporary parking pass, I wonder if the mechanics of this program is that they need to get a pass each time they're conducting business at the courthouse. And I don't think that's the intention. It's not how it worked before with the Kitsap Planning Commission. They had a pass that they held at least annually, I think, even though I think we were doing it improperly. So I think we should, we should look at that so that they're not having to get a pass each time they're having a planning commission meeting.
My concern, only concern with taking this to committee, if we give enough direction here tonight, this is something that the county had, we had in place for years, but we had no policy for. And they've been without this for two months. And I'd hate for us to study this for another month. Do we have enough direction? I'd like to give enough direction from the diocese here that we just bring this back in two weeks if we could.
I'm personally fine with that. I think, you know, you've heard here what our concern is. We don't want to open up the bar and door, but the way the language is here, it's just, it is not only opening, it's taking the door off.
Yeah. I, I, you had your point. So we have a motion, though, to table this to a committee. Is staff comfortable with what you've heard tonight and if we need some more discussion with drafting it without the assistance of a committee?
I feel comfortable drafting, redrafting without the assistance of a committee.
Okay. So we have a motion to take this to committee. All in favor, so we need to vote on that?
Unless the motion maker wants to...
Amend it?
Withdraw his motion and just let staff deal with it.
Okay. I thought our training said we should deal with, deal with the motion and...
Deal with it, a couple of regrets.
But all in favor of taking this to committee, say aye. Hearing none, all in favor of, say nay, or not?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion fails to take it to committee. Entertain a new motion.
Mayor, I would move that we direct staff to take the comments that were made here this evening, modify this, and bring it back to our next council meeting for discussion and potential adoption.
I second it.
Motion and a second to take this, bring this back to our next council meeting after staff reworks this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None? Okay. We'll try again.
But all in favor?
I believe we were.
And there was, I made a motion to accept it, so we have to deal with that motion also.
That, since the motion has been tabled to a future meeting, that main motion will carry to the next meeting.
That was my understanding. Next is item B, Adoption of an Ordinance Establishing Updated Interim Subdivision Regulations. Mr. Bond?
Thank you. On September 8, 2015, the city council passed ordinance number 15-15, which repealed the then-existing subdivision regulations under Chapter 1672 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code and established an interim subdivision code codified under a newly-established Title 26 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code for a period of six months. That ordinance is set to expire at the beginning of March 2016. During the past six months, the city staff has prepared draft permanent subdivision regulations. However, city staff requires additional time to allow for the public, the city's planning commission, and the city council to review and comment on the proposed permanent subdivision regulations and to officially adopt the permanent regulations once finalized. Additionally, in administering the interim subdivision code over the past six months, city staff has identified necessary amendments to the interim regulations to help clarify and assist city staff in interpreting and administering the interim regulations, most notably the inclusion of a new chapter governing large lot subdivisions. The updated interim subdivision code is included as Exhibit 1 to the proposed ordinance before the council for approval tonight, with the updated revisions indicated in underline and strike-through mode. RCW 3670A 360 provides that the city council may adopt interim land use controls and ordinances for a period of up to 12 months, provided that a public hearing is held within at least 60 days of adoption, and that city staff establishes a work plan for the adoption of permanent regulations. City staff recommends that the city council pass the proposed new ordinance to adopt updated interim subdivision regulations. To clearly define the effect, the effective and termination dates of the previous interim code and the effective date of the updated interim code, the proposed ordinance repeals the previous interim ordinance and declares an emergency to allow for the updated interim subdivision regulations to take immediate effect upon passage by the council. Furthermore, repealing the previous ordinance and passing a new ordinance allows the council to leave the new interim ordinance in effect for up to 12 months with the establishment of a work plan, which is included in the proposed ordinance, rather than the standard six months. This extended period will allow sufficient time for staff to conduct a thorough public comment and outreach process, and for the planning commission and city council to thoughtfully consider the proposed permanent regulations prior to adoption. It also eliminates the need for staff to bring back to council an extension of the interim regulations after six months, which would be required if the previous ordinance was merely amended and extended, rather than repealed and replaced. So the staff recommendation is to approve the new revised interim subdivision ordinance.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt an ordinance establishing updated interim subdivision regulations.
Second. Discussion?
Yes. Nick, we're talking about a work plan of up to 12 months, and it's, I hope that we can begin to see what that work plan looks like. I think that for whatever reasons, there's perhaps distaste for, you know, how this is working. And we're creating, you know, separate vesting laws for permit applications. And so I'm hoping that we can, we can see this move forward, you know, in a very logical and orderly fashion with stakeholders and looking forward to that.
Yeah, we have a timeline established that we've, that I've worked with the attorney to write up. And so she's going to spend the next 60 days working on refining this and going through the previous comments that we've received prior to releasing a new document, which will be the basis of discussion moving forward. And so we're going to try to take into consideration those comments and, and really present the options that are available and sit down with the stakeholders.
So then is it your intent to have the stakeholders also look at the following ordinance that we're going to be discussing at the same time? The processing ordinance?
Yes, correct.
Really, the intent was to sit this aside till we finish. The attorney has plenty of time for us, its staff and our planning commission, because we've got the comp plan that we're working on right now.
Right, right.
So we're, want to get the comp plan done, move this out, out far enough so that we can tackle this right after the comp plan and start our public process then. Is that not correct, Mr. Bond?
That is correct.
Any other discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Nick, did, did you, did I hear you say that you had the work plan attached?
If you look in the ordinance, I believe it's section 12, 11?
10.
10, there it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just briefly described.
Other questions? Seeing none, we are going to be voting on the adoption of ordinance establishing updated interim subdivision regulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to item 7C, Adoption of an Ordinance Establishing Updated Interim Permit Processing Regulations.
All right. Rather than reading a staff report that largely resembles the previous staff report, I will just summarize and say that we are looking at adopting interim permit processing ordinance, a new permit processing ordinance on an interim basis to replace the existing interim permit processing ordinance. The work on this was done using the same timelines as for the subdivision ordinance. And the recommendation here is to approve this new interim ordinance for a period of one year in accordance with the work plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance establishing updated interim permit processing regulations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of this sort, of this matter? Deener?
So Nick, I can understand concerns from, from the public about the previous ordinance that we talked about. But this, this seems to explicitly state how we review permit applications. So understanding that there's concerns about development code and what that means, is, are you hearing the same kinds of concerns about this ordinance as well?
I think we heard far fewer concerns about this ordinance. There were a handful of comments that we received on that. And we did make some corrections here and there, but this one is, I think, much closer to a final product than maybe the subdivision code.
Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none, we'll be voting on adopting an ordinance establishing updated interim permit processing regulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7D, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Parametrics for 2016 Bethel Road Paving Bid Documents and Construction Engineering and Procurement Procedure Documentation. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. In 2016, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department will complete the Bethel Road pavement repair project, which was initiated in 2014. In order to accomplish this interim Bethel corridor project, the ad-ready bid documents need to be revised for schedules A, B, D, and E only. And was, as was the case in 2015, bid support in construction engineering is needed. Parametrics, being the engineer of record for the project and having been selected in 2014 via a request for qualifications process, has provided a proposal for the 2016 final bid document revisions and construction engineering services, including bid support. The city's Public Works Department pursuant to RCW 39.80 has determined that Parametri is the most qualified professional services firm to complete this project and has documented the selection process with the attached resolution. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution thereby approving contract number 012-16 with parametrics in the amount not to exceed $35,164.27 for the 2016 final bid document revisions and construction engineering services, including bid support, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Mr. Guarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution therefore, thereby approving contract number 012-16 with parametrics in the amount not to exceed $35,164.27 for the 2016 final bid document revisions and construction engineering services, including bid support, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39 dot, dot, zero, eight, zero.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Donlon. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I'm just, I'm just going to say that I'm excited that we're moving forward with fixing Bethel.
Well, remember, it's the interim paving, not the Bethel corridor project.
No, it doesn't.
It's not a five-lane project?
It's a patch.
Oh, no.
It's fixing the current roadway.
Yeah.
Doesn't give you expanded capacity, but it fixes the roadway.
Step in the right direction.
Yep.
So, all in favor of adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Parametrix, Inc., Parametrics for the 2016 Bethel paving bid documentation, construction engineering, and procurement procedure documentation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We are on to item E, Approval of a Contract with Neptune Marine LLC for the 2016 Phase II construction of the DeKalb Pier Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On January 8, 2016, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department advertised for bid the 2016 Phase II DeKalb Pier Improvement Project. By the February 9, 2016, 1:00 p.m. bid opening deadline, the City of Port Orchard received nine qualified bids, as summarized below. The bids ranged, because I don't want to have to read every one of these, ranged from $788,993.52 as the low, to the high at $1,148,632,090. And Neptune Marine LLC was the lowest bid. So having determined that Neptune Marine LLC was the lowest qualified bidder, the city's Public Works Department, one, verified that Neptune Marine is not on the SAM.gov debarred list, and two, has confirmed references. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute contract 001-16 with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed $788,993.52 for the 2016 Phase II DeKalb Pier Project. I would like to note that the fiscal impact for the lowest qualified bid, that it exceeds the 2016 budget by $19,193.52. Acceptance of the bid will lead to a first half-year budget amendment for the amount of excess, an additional contingency of $20,000. The amendment will authorize $40,000 additional funding from the real estate excise tax fund. I'd also like to point out that, as I mentioned before, we have a $15,000 line item for the stellar sea lions that, I've not seen stellar sea lions on the side of the bay, so that won't even, that won't be utilized. With the additional $40,000 to cover the bid and the cost of the permits, you would still have a $12,500 surplus. And with the, if we don't have stellar sea lions, you're still going, you're going to end up with $27,500 unspent. So by authorizing additional $40,000, you're not necessarily, you're just providing me with the budget authority to allocate it if needed.
Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute contract number 00... Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute contract number 001-16 with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed $788,993.52 for the 2016 Phase Two DeKalb Pier project.
A motion and a second. Discussion? I'd just like to point out that Mr. Dorsey has just ensured that we will have an entire family of stellar sea lions moved to our waterfront this spring.
That would be Murphy's Law, or, but you just manifested that, so.
So, seeing no discussion, we will be voting on approval of a contract with Neptune Marine LLC for the 2016 Phase Two construction of the DeKalb Pier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries. We are on to the approval of the carnival application for Butler Amusement. Ms. Clerk Reinsen.
Port Orchard Municipal Code 5.32080 requires council approval of an organization requesting to operate a carnival within the city. On February 16, 2016, Butler Amusements, Inc., submitted an application requesting to hold a carnival in the downtown parking lots by Peninsula Feed and the gazebo, beginning Thursday, May 12, and ending Sunday, May 15. Their operation hours will be Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The carnival will consist of approximately 11 amusement rides, six concessions, and a food concession. Setup will start the morning of Tuesday, May 10, through Wednesday, May 11, and at, until approximately 7:00 p.m., with the teardown and staging of the equipment being Monday, May 16 to May 17. The applicant has indicated that there will be garbage cans and portable restrooms at the event, including an ADA-accessible restroom. They will have a generator that will cover all their electricity needs. They will be seeking a metered connection to a fire hydrant for their one food concession. The water would be connected to their professional food concession trailer and used to wash utensils in their three-compartment sink. They have received approval from the Port of Bremerton, use their portion of their property. They have paid the city's required license fee and have met the city's insurance requirements. Butler Amusements is aware that they must apply and be approved for a business license before the event. City Departments, Kitsap Transit have reviewed the application and provided their, submitted their comments and recommendation, however, we're still waiting for the fire department's comments. And so, the application has been submitted, and for your guys' review, I can't even speak. Application has been submitted to the council for your guys' consideration.
Is there a motion? Mr. Clausen.
I move to approve the carnival license for Butler Amusements to be held in the parking lot located behind Penn Feed and the gazebo, beginning Tuesday, May 10 to Tuesday, May 17, which includes setup, teardown, and staging time.
I second it.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I'd like to know, the, this is, as I understand, this is going to displace some parking permit holders in the parking lot? Are we making any provisions for those people to be able to park out in the general parking in the streets? Is there anything, anything we've done for them?
Not at this time.
Mr. Charlie, do you have a comment?
When might we receive comments from the fire department?
I'm not quite sure. I know I had a verbal, the, Janine and I had a verbal conversation with him late last week, and it's my understanding he had no comments, that it's been in the past and he didn't have any concerns, but for some reason, he just didn't get us the comments.
I'm thinking there's been a little bit of discussion on this, and Beck, I believe, you would kind of look at a master calendar and kind of saw how this particular event fell in between a number of other events. I just want to make sure that we are just recognizing the fact that that parking lot is a paid lot, it's being used by a lot of people on a daily basis, and that we're looking at this not just event by event, but looking at it over a period of time to make sure that, you know, we're providing, I guess, a service that we're currently promoting before we just.
What I had.
Ms. Ashby, go ahead.
Thank you. When, we had had a cancellation last meeting of a potential hydroplane race on, in Sinclair Inlet, and then we had a presentation from the Fathoms of Funds folks for this, and both of those events were going to be needing our parking lot for an entire week, and then the following weekend is Harbor Fest, which traditionally is when we have this annual seagull calling contest and a pirate's rendezvous, some other things. So what I had mentioned at our retreat is that I felt we needed a policy for use of our parking lot. What my concerns with this particular application is, I believe strongly that who's ever going to be using our parking lot, particularly if they're going to use it during weekdays, when we currently have long-term parking down there, that, that the event organizers provide us a plan for displaced parking. And there could be a number of things they could do within that plan, perhaps work with Kitsap Transit and provide a shuttle for the commuters from a lot somewhere close, you know, a temporary parking right. There are things that I think could take place, but, but we are displacing people that use that parking lot for their commute, and so that is of concern to me, particularly since we're going to be, the request is for a full week, and they're not even starting the event on Thursday and Friday until 5:00 p.m. My other concern was accommodation for the farmer's market. I realize that we do not have their application yet, but I don't believe we have any, I don't believe our application is ready yet for the summer season. So I also have concerns about the farmer's market and where we're going to put it during that particular weekend. My personal recommendation, or when I thought about it, something that I could support, would be not using the parking lot behind Amy's. There is a couple of different areas there where I thought perhaps we could move our long-term parking behind Amy's for that particular week, and then also use the Amy's parking lot for the farmer's market. And I also believed that that would allow the transit access to and from, or, allow the transit access to get to the foot ferry and make some of the concerns of our city engineer would meet some of his needs. That's, that's something I can support. I'm having a difficult time supporting the application as presented.
Just another kind of point of reference, just, would just be the financial implication to the city with lost income from that parking lot that is something that is in our budget, and we would just recognize that there is a financial impact.
About $6,000 for the week.
$2,000.
$2,000?
Alan, I've got it right here.
I believe that a week was about $2,000, or 1960, but that is $2,000 that the city would not be getting as income. I am also concerned that we have pre-sold parking spaces to monthly commuters, and we aren't providing a place now. I'm not one of them, so I'm not personally affected by that, but there are people who expect to be able to park right before they catch the foot ferry to commute to work that are not being accommodated. I actually love carnivals, I think they're a lot of fun. I'm not convinced this is the best location for a variety of reasons, and I would support it in an alternate location.
Do we know, is there any opportunity at the Hoggins store that currently is closed? Would that lot be available? Do you know?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is that not, the Hoggins store that closed?
The Safeway. Former Safeway.
Former Safeway?
Former Safeway parking lot?
I don't know if there's, if there's an op.
The Safeway is going back in.
It's going back in before this time?
It's supposed to be opening before this time, I don't know when.
I've heard the latter part of April they expect to be open.
Mr. Clausen, do you have a comment?
Well, I do. In reference to the farmer's market and what to do with them historically when we've done these things, they've moved down to Frederick and worked well. I'm assuming that that would work again, but we'd have to talk with them to verify it. In regards to the monthly parking folks, it's February today, and this is in May.
May.
We have plenty of time to warn people that in May, probably not a good idea to buy a monthly parking pass, that you should buy the daily. In fact, we were talking about moving away from a monthly pass and just asking people to use daily anyway. So I don't know that that, as far as making a commitment to folks who have purchased a monthly pass, I think we could deal with that. As far as displaced commuters, if I understand, Beck, what you were saying in regards to the policy, when the hydroplane races were scheduled to occur, we would be facing two weeks' worth of impact of the parking lot, where now it's this week that we would be dealing with. And as far as Harbor Fest, that's typically on the weekend, that's not generally during the week, is it?
No, that's correct, and what I brought up at the retreat is we need a policy.
Right, no, I agree with you, I just needed to make sure I understood how this would affect the commuters, if you will, or the parking users downtown. So we're talking about, as far as we know today, setting farmer's market, which is typically a weekend thing, we're talking about a five-day impact this particular week that we're talking about with the carnival, so just want to make sure I understood things.
Am I allowed to speak again?
Certainly.
Okay. I am concerned about the loss of revenue, only in the sense that I'm wondering how much Fathoms is anticipating netting. I mean, I wouldn't expect that we would ask Fathoms to reimburse the city for lost parking revenue, but does anyone know the amount that Fathoms is expecting to make from this carnival?
I know, we don't know how, if we lose part, the parking slots for Amy, there's a couple more rides and stuff.
Well, I didn't need a detailed, I'm just wondering, like, what are, okay, so we don't know what you could benefit from in the first place? We don't know how much you're going to make, like, if it's 5,000, 10,000, we don't know.
Because the percentages are broke up and such that they have to make $20,000 before you get part of our percentage.
Okay, so it could be minimal. The only other thing I'd like to say is there are alternate locations, at least that I would think of, would have a lot of space. One is the former Kmart parking lot, another might be the Boat Launch, which is also visible to downtown, and the third would be the South Kitsap Mall parking area.
That would cause us to have to pay rent to the South Kitsap Mall, that would be something that would be a disaster for us to deal with. We have locations where you can buy a place to put the rides, and you wouldn't have any parking whatsoever for anybody, you would literally take up all, because we have downs down there as well, and so that would probably interact with their business. Does the other location be about it? The Boat Launch?
Kmart and Boat Launch? Well, I certainly understand what that's saying, but it sounds like someone's parking is going to be taken away, so we have to decide who that should be.
Looked by Tractor Supply, which is the former Kmart, what you're discussing, there is a lot of land parking up there, but not enough for a carnival. But if we could, if there was a way to have Kitsap Transit run a shuttle down from there in the mornings or something for the people parking, you have, and then back there in the afternoon.
We should really try to hold our deliberations amongst ourselves here, as just a point of.
I'm sorry. So, those are my thoughts, I'm done.
Any other comments? Mr. Lucrelli.
Mark Dorsey had some concerns that I saw in the report, have those been addressed?
Well, apart from the parking situation, I guess, the concerns that I raised were really twofold. The proposal was to basically close Harrison, and because Harrison, one is if, and so I think I said in my response, is you could keep it open, because Kitsap Transit has to get through without doing that circuitous. If you did have rides on both the Amy's Lot Three and then the paid parking, you could have railing there, and you could have an assigned crossing person to allow people to cross that section. So I think Harrison has to stay open. The issue is, as you know, as you go up Harrison and then you turn west, that's a one-way road, and so as you're on Harrison trying to exit, there's no left turn. So people are going to go in there, and if it's blocked off, they're going to be forced to come back out onto Bay Street and take a right. They don't have a way to get back around to Sydney and loop around. So, so I think if you're going to close Harrison, you can't do it halfway up Harrison, which, and just let buses through. And, so you just close it off completely, and then if you close it off completely, now for seven days, you've got Amy's, Penn Feed, and all those businesses in the Mentor Building that are going to lose seven days of revenue. So, I think the only solution is, at that point, is you have to keep Harrison open for both Kitsap Transit, and I think if fire would have commented, they would have said they wanted to keep that open. And again, a simple solution would be to put, you know, somebody, a designated crossing area across Harrison, and then having a crossing guard that's assigned by the volunteers, and making sure that those parking stalls on Harrison aren't being utilized by anybody other than the residents. Now, interesting, when we allowed, when we did the swim deck prescriptive, act of prescription rights, that little thing on Frederick, we made him go to everybody on both sides of the street and get support of the carnival, and that was for a one-day, Sunday afternoon event. And so for consistency, you'd think that, have we heard from Penn Feed, have we heard from the restaurant, have we heard from all those other small businesses that might be impacted? So, I think the only solution is to keep Harrison open, and the proposal to close it creates financial hardship on all those businesses, it creates a potential unsafe condition, having people take a left. It also creates a situation where they come in and they have to do a turn, and there's no turnaround, so they'll go in there and they'll be doing an 18-point turn to get back around and then be forced to take a right. So I think closing Harrison is extremely problematic. I think there's a simple solution, which is the crossing guard.
Other comments? Okay, we're ready to vote on this. We are. We are voting on the approval of a carnival application for Butler Amusement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
No.
So I believe we had four in favor. Can we show, can we vote by hands? All in favor, say, raise your hand. We have three opposed, we have four, so the motion fails.
Can we comment on with some modification?
You could make a new motion.
If you want to do that.
I would move to approve the carnival license for Butler Amusements to be held in the, well, what this says, in the parking lots behind Penn Feed and the gazebo. This does not say anything about Amy's, that original motion. And that's what my motion would be, would be to approve the carnival license for the parking lots behind Penn Feed and the gazebo, not to include the parking, the two parking lots directly behind Amy's, beginning Tuesday, May 10 to Tuesday, May 17, which will include setup, teardown, and staging time.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Are we working on a displacement plan? Would that be the responsibility of the city or the applicant? We're talking about a potential shuttle for displaced commuter cars up to the only parking lot? Do we want to specify who would be handling that?
My motion is to, is for the displacement plan to be used, using the parking to be used, using the parking lots behind Amy's for the long-term parking.
It won't be enough. We'd still need an additional, I think, consideration for others. I think it's doable.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm very supportive of the carnival. I enjoy the carnival, but we do have an issue, and the city doesn't have a policy yet on use of that parking lot. But we do have a commitment to the people who rely on their livelihood to get back and forth that park there every day. And so I'm trying to find a solution that will, you know, work for everybody.
Beck, are you, is your motion also including keeping Harrison open?
Keeping Harrison open, yes.
Mr. Clausen, how much capacity is up at the Armory? Not a lot for the computers?
Not a lot.
Not a lot, okay. I know you have an inventory of every available parking spot in county.
That's how I gave you that quick answer.
And I'm all, I just, I know that I've talked too many times, but I'm remembering it was just in January, or was it December, when Kitsap Transit made some adjustments in their ferries and how full that parking lot was. So that made it apparent to me that there's a demand for that parking.
Well, I think there's additional demand in May, too, just being a tourist season and the weather's nice. There's gonna be more people, you know, milling around downtown.
Do we have a second on your motion, Beck?
Yes.
Well, and part of the problem is the length. It's the length of time and sandwich between the events, and we have to work on this. We really do.
Can I move to amend that motion?
You can make it.
I would like to add the fact, to make sure we get the approval of our fire district on this before moving forward. They'd be pending their agreement with us.
So we have a motion on the floor to ask for the approval of the fire district before this moves forward?
A second time.
The motion is second. So the motion on the floor is, the amended motion on the floor is to allow for, to ask for the approval of the fire district. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries to ask for the, to seek the approval of the fire district before proceeding. We're back to the main motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. And this is directed to the city clerk. This application is coming to counsel from Butler Amusements. And the application, as we have it, is totally exclusive of Fathoms of Fun. So my question is, any additional police overtime or anything like that? That would be paid by Butler Amusements?
Correct.
Can we say anything? I can add a couple of questions, like security and stuff like that.
No.
I would like the information.
Okay. Assistant Lieutenant Lucarelli is asking for the information. Please step forward, Mr. Mahaney.
A couple, a couple of things. Security is being taken care of by Butler and Fathoms of Fun. So we don't need to use the local police. Basically, the only time they need their security is down at the parade or down at the carnival area. And if we need anything other than what that is, then we call 911. We can get the police that way. They had provided their own security in the evening down there also. They have an onsite trailer that was parked onsite, and their onsite people will watch the carnival in the evenings. The fire department and I, when we talked before, it's the standard 150-foot be able to get within, which is the fire lane that goes all the way around, remains open at all times. That's the standard thing. And the original one where Amy and everybody signed off on, when I turned in the paperwork when at the last meeting, 44 out of 55 businesses turned in comments on how they felt about the carnival and stuff. The ones that didn't turn them in were either not only open on weekends, closed for emergencies, or bail bondsman. They didn't have, they didn't put anything in it. The people that live, live behind Amy, over by Amy's and Amy's business people, that all that work behind Amy's where they park, they were gonna be able to come in on Harrison, turn left, and go into their parking areas. We weren't blocking their parking so they could park. And then, as in the past, with the transit, was gonna go around behind the library and then back out on the road, on the original plan. Our plan, Butler didn't put in about the Amy's thing and stuff, but that's what they asked for. And that's what we submitted for, and that's why we did the questionnaire in town. Turned in at the last meeting. I have all that paperwork with me. But we discussed where everything's going there. And I understand, you know, I see it's drawn up on top on the map there, which way they're gonna go and stuff, and the fire lane. And in the past carnivals that we had, of course, most of that was port property then, before the city and port swapped properties. We had the whole parking lots, both parking lots is where we had the carnival. And Harrison did stop at the midway point, and then people turned left, and they went back out around, passed behind the library, and out the bus route, if they came down and they got stuck, coming in the wrong way. So they were able to go out and make their left-hand turn and go back out to Bay Street.
So can I ask a clarification question?
Yes, Mr. Dorsey.
So were the, so with Harrison being closed, were all the businesses in the Mentor Building, do they know that they would be basically having no parking for patrons for a full week?
Except in one of those spaces that they have.
Which is only about half.
Correct.
Based on where you're.
They understand that. That's why we go and questioned every one of them.
So Penn Feed and all those businesses really south of Amy's, were okay having all their parking?
Correct, for that week.
Impacted for seven days?
Thank you, Mr. Mahaney. Other questions?
I'm just curious, you know, in the past, we've had carnivals there, and maybe it was before monthly parking passes or such, but how was parking diffused then?
There was no paid parking.
They moved.
They just moved.
They just moved, yeah.
Right.
And sometimes then it was 10 to 14 days for the carnivals.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mahaney. Other comments?
My only other comment again is just, you know, I'm seeing this as a for-profit company that's gonna, going to, you know, profit from this venture. I don't want to take anything away from Fathoms of Fun and their opportunity to raise money and to do wonderful things in our community and continue to support that. But I don't know that it's the city's business to be maybe giving away thousands of dollars' worth of income to support, you know, because it's possible that, you know, if the carnival isn't hugely successful, that this company could basically be the only ones to stand to make anything from it. And then we have, you know, in addition to creating other challenges, have come out of pocket to support a non-state company. And I don't know if future policies or whatever could address that and would have to, to make up for that lost revenue to the city.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'll throw out my comments. So it appears that in the past, that parking has simply moved and managed itself. We've had buy-off from, by my counts of the people who responded, 95% of the businesses in that area that would be impacted said they were okay with it. And I know that we are in need of a parking policy, but I don't believe that businesses should suffer for lack of that policy in the meantime. That's my position, and I'll be supporting it.
Any last comments? Seeing none. Mr. Chang?
I appreciate the effort that went into the survey and contacting over 40 people that you got responses from. My concern is that the survey did not ask them specifically if they wanted the carnival for a whole week. It asked them if they wanted parking A or parking B. To me, that was the options that was given to them. And may or may not have had dates. I would actually support this if we amended the motion, and I'll, I'll try. My amendment would be that before we approve this application, that we establish a displacement plan for 80 cars. The average of the 1960 divided by 5, I'm coming with 80. That would make this an acceptable motion for me. So I move that we require a displacement plan before approval of the application.
Chang has a motion. Your second? Hearing none, the motion.
You know, I, no, I would, I would second that, because my motion only assumed that long-term parking would move to Amy's. And if we were to have a parking displacement plan, then I wouldn't be that troubled with using, you know, the additional parking back there, if there was a plan. I just wasn't seeing a plan.
So just a thought I have here is, could this be a option A, which is if there isn't a long-term plan, then the Amy's lot isn't available. But if a parking plan is put into place, parking displacement plan, then the Amy's lot is available. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that motion would have to be crafted to provide for that.
Sorry, I didn't.
We have an amendment here, so a motion and a second to add a displacement plan, but did you second Fred's motion?
I did.
Okay, I thought you did, so. It's clear, you have.
I just, you know, how would we judge the adequacy of that displacement plan?
Well, the motion maker had in mind that it would specify 80 cars being parked at an alternate location. It, I did not have any particular location in mind. Just a plan that would specify where they would go, potentially.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
I just want to make sure I understand, because the way that this is currently crafted, if the amendment is approved, then we're gonna require somebody to come up with a plan to, to deal with 80 vehicles. And if that plan is provided, then they have access to the parking behind Penn Feed and next to the gazebo. As Beck mentioned, you would be open to allowing an expanded footprint, but the current motion.
Doesn't allow for that.
Doesn't allow for that.
So I think the, the amendment potentially should state that, with a 80-car displacement plan, that the lot behind also include the opening of Amy's lot. Is that?
Open up the lot to the carnival?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that?
The motion maker accepts that amendment.
Friendly amendment there?
The amendment to the amendment, yeah.
Is the second agreeable? So we have, we have an amendment that states if a displacement plan for 80 cars can be put together, then the north, the lot north of Amy's then would be available to the carnival. Is that what I?
Yeah, the only loophole there is if, is that assuming that if there's no displacement plan, then they just get the one lot without a displacement plan?
Without the displacement plan, then the main motion is to allow the carnival without the north lot behind Amy's, because the long-term parking is, I'm just, that's.
No, I'm hearing, yeah. And I think we need a displacement plan either way, you know. I mean, you're dealing with such a huge volume of cars that those two little strips behind Amy's isn't gonna be enough to truly handle it. And I'm fully supportive of expanding it. I mean, I think their ability to be successful would be to have that additional space. But I think either way, we would want to.
So I think we need to deal with the amendment first, so. Mr. Chang's amendment is to, for a displacement plan for up, for 80 cars. And if that is put together, then the north lot behind Amy is avail, the footprint there is available to the carnival. All is, any other discussion of that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Seeing no, we have one, one, one nay. Motion carries. Now we are back to the main motion. Are you wishing to, we speak one last time of the main motion? Or are we done with our discussion of the main motion?
At least restate it.
So the main motion is, we've got an amendment that allows for a displacement plan and to capture the footprint behind, north of Amy's. So provided, if that doesn't come to fruition, then the carnival footprint is behind Penn Feed and next to the gazebo? Is that? Have I captured that?
And, and the, the fire department approval that was originally in there?
Yeah, we've got a.
And I don't mean to complice anymore, but I'd like to move that we require a displacement plan either way at this point. So we've got one for both lots, but even if they choose to take the one lot, I would still like there to be a displacement plan. So at this point, I'd like to move to amend.
So you're making, we have a new, we have a new amendment to deal with an overall displacement plan.
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Chang? So what is, so for 80 cars, is so yours intent, the same 80 cars then? Which some come from Amy's and some come from wherever else?
Yeah, unless they choose to, yes, yes, that will work.
Okay.
And Harrison is open or not?
It appears that it would be, because you're parking in the lot north of Amy's.
Unless you have a displacement plan.
Well, no, it's just the car.
Still gonna have to be a fire lane left open, so you'd be going through there.
Okay, so, but that was part of the amendment.
It was part of the motion I made, is I added the verbiage that Harrison Street was, remained open.
To remain open.
That wasn't mentioned.
So the current amendment is for an 80-car displacement plan, which takes into consideration the cars in north of Amy's and some other location. Any other discussion of that current amendment?
And again, just to be clear, if they want to take the whole thing, that's fine. We just need a displacement plan for 80 cars elsewhere.
Okay.
That was actually my original intent with my amendment, was to require an 80-car displacement plan before approval of the application.
Okay, I think we're there now.
Okay.
Good.
If approved.
If approved, if this amendment is approved. All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So we have one nay, that motion carries. So there's an 80-car displacement plan in place regardless. Okay? So now we are back to the main motion again, which is the approval of the carnival with two amendments relating to displacement, actually three amendments. One relating to the fire service, two relating to two different displacement plans, potential displacement plans.
Harrison open?
And keeping Harrison open. Okay, we all, clear as mud?
Good job. Boy, I'm hanging on to it.
So, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries. All right, we are on to item, what was formerly item 4C, is now 7G. And I believe, Mr. Dorsey, that is you.
Your honor, council members, on February 5th, 2016, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department requested quotes for a 2016 four-wheel-drive half-ton regular cab and a 2016 four-wheel-drive half-ton extended cab, replacement pickup truck for the city's water sewer utility and the store, and the street department. By the February 9th, 2016 deadline, the city received combined quotes from two local auto vendors and three from the Washington State bid list as follows. So on the bid list, we had Corin Ford at $59,369.45 with tax included, Bud Clary Chevrolet at $62,335.44 with tax included, and Bud Clary Chrysler Dodge at $61,388.36, tax included. Then from the local, we had West Hills Chrysler Jeep Dodge at $61,626, tax included, Titus Ford at $76,300, tax included, and Gray Chevrolet did not submit a quote. Public Works staff reviewed all quotes and determined that the West Hills Chrysler Jeep Dodge bid, total of $61,626, including tax, for both the 2016 four-wheel-drive Dodge Ram 1500 Tradesman Half-Ton Pickup Truck with regular cab and the 2016 four-wheel Dodge, four-wheel-drive Dodge Ram 1500 Tradesman Half-Ton Pickup Truck with extended cab was the lowest responsible bid. Please note that the city's Public Works Department fleet does not include Ford products and that the $237.60 and that the $237.64 differential between the Bud Clary Chrysler Dodge and the West Hills Chrysler Jeep Dodge is negligible when considering the benefits of buying local, i.e. faster delivery window. Applicable licensing and recording fees not included. So, staff recommends adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of two 2016 four-wheel-drive Ram 1500 Tradesman Half-Ton Pickup Trucks, one regular cab, one extended cab, from West Hills Chrysler Jeep Dodge in an amount not to exceed $61,626 for both vehicles, including applicable Washington State sales tax plus any applicable licensing and recording fees.
Motion.
I'm on a roll. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of two 2016 four-wheel-drive Ram 1500 Tradesman Half-Ton Pickup Trucks, one regular cab, one extended cab, from West Hills Chrysler Jeep Dodge in an amount not to exceed $61,626 for both vehicles, including applicable Washington State sales tax plus any applicable licensing and recording fees.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Clausen.
I'm curious, could we have purchased these vehicles straight off the state bid list as opposed to going out to bid for them?
That was going off the state bid list where you go-
Remnants again.
Right, so when we go through the state bid list, we go and we basically request the vehicle off the state bid list. What happened last year from Bud Clary Chevrolet or Dodge was that it actually took us 12 months to get the vehicle delivered. So, they still give you a quote when you go directly off the list. We've historically gone off the state bid list and get, received quotes, but we, based on council's direction in the past, we've also always received local bids to give the local dealers an opportunity, and so-
How does this price compare with the price if we just bought it off the contract?
This is the price right off the contract.
This is the price of those who submitted a bid.
No, the-
You can go to the state contract and just pick your vehicle and buy it.
The Corin Ford, Bud Clary Chevrolet, and Bud Clary Dodge are a state bid list vehicle.
Okay, so we just, those are the available off there?
Right.
You didn't go through any kind of an RFP process?
No, we went, well, we went to them, we gave them our specifications, and-
Okay, so you did do a bid per se of these that were on the state contract, but you can also go straight to the state contract. They go out to bid, and you could buy a vehicle off the state contract. You said it takes 12 weeks or months or whatever last time. What would the price be if we just went to the state contract and bought it compared to these?
There weren't, there weren't vehicles available just to buy off the list. They're all in manner, they're all in production.
They were not?
No.
Okay. Can you answer my question?
That's why I took 12 months before is they had no vehicles and we were waiting for Detroit to, there's such a backlog that we had to wait 12 months to get our vehicle.
We buy vehicles all the time into transit off the state contract. Depends on what time of the year you buy them, but here's the price, and you just call up and order them. So, that's why I was curious of how that price compared to going to the people who historically gave you a price and you asked for a quote.
Well, I guess my understanding is we went to the state bid list to purchase a vehicle, but we, one, verified that the vehicle met our specifications and they gave us the price. We just compared that to the local.
Okay, then, what was the price of the vehicle that you used to compare to the local? Was that this one particular vendor?
These are the prices that are listed. These are the state bid lists.
We're clearly not communicating, Mark.
Yeah, the first three are off the state bid list. The other, the other two are, we reached out to a local dealership and said, hey, we've got the, we've got a state bid, do you want, would you like to bid on these vehicles?
Right. The state bid were, what we received, we would buy that directly off the state bid list. We just looked at the local as well.
So, if I read this correctly, then we could have purchased two Ford vehicles from Corwin Ford for $59,000 apiece?
Correct.
But we're deciding to go with West Hills and buy Dodges at $61,600?
Correct, because from a maintenance standpoint, tooling and diagnostic equipment, we don't have Fords in our fleet. We have Dodge and Chevrolet. And when I checked with the treasurer, we decided that when you looked at the timing factor and then dealing with us now having to take care of Fords, that was a, that was a acceptable exclusion to not introduce Fords to our fleet.
It's $59,000 for the pair, not each.
Correct. Compared to $61,000 for a pair.
Other questions? Do you have questions?
And the, and we have $70,000 in the budget.
And John addressed him.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2016 four-wheel-drive Dodge Ram Half-Ton Extended Cab and a 2016 four-wheel-drive Ram Half-Ton Regular Cab from the public, for the Public Works Department. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
One in opposition, motion carries. And we are done with our business items. We are on to council committee reports. Committee have a report, I don't believe they've met, they meet-
Twenty-ninth.
On the 29th. Economic Development and Tourism, do you have a report?
No, we will meet on March 14th at 9:00 here.
Okay. Utilities, I believe you met this week?
Yes, we did.
Have a report?
I surely had it earlier. We met February 22nd at 9:30, and it was wonderful to meet Thomas, who is an employee here at City Hall who's looking at the water system overview. I thought the presentation was extremely informative and answered quite a few of the questions that I had going into that meeting. The long and short of it is that the city is looking at our previous plan for water usage and our supply, and it's being evaluated now if that plan should be followed or if some modifications should be made. Further information will be coming forth after a study, and I was real pleased again with Thomas's report. The next meeting will be-
3:21.
It was March 20th?
Twenty-one.
March 20th. We're meeting on the third Mondays at 9:30 here at City Hall.
Land Use Committee.
Yeah, the second Monday of March.
Mr. Dina?
I don't have a report at this time. I just got the minutes and I'll report at the next meeting.
Thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory, no report?
No report.
Okay. Chimes and lights at all?
Yes, actually, if we would take a peek, please, Monday, March 14th at 3:30 at City Hall, I have to have Brandy take a look and see if this is something that would work and with staff. That's what I'm proposing for our next meeting. We'll verify that.
Get back with Brandy and work out that date. Okay, we all had, no, we had a council retreat on Saturday, and I thank you and staff both for giving up your Saturday, and I think we had a very productive session there. I look forward to getting Claire's summary report, and then us, piece by piece, we've got a number of items that you guys presented that we didn't get to on Saturday that, that we'll bring forward in bits and pieces as time permits, so. I'll put a summary of those lists too, maybe we'll need to prioritize that, that list so we can get to things that are more important first. So, any other, see, outside agencies? Any reports? Okay, I got-
KETA?
KETA, okay.
Yes, we had a KETA meeting, the first quarter meeting that was on Thursday, was held at Watson's Furniture in the Paulsboro Industrial Park, and I have to say that I was absolutely amazed at Watson. I didn't even know it existed. Have you, has anyone ever been there? Pacific Northwest Office Furniture Manufacturer. It's an amazing facility, Brandy may have it to show you. That is in Paulsboro. It employs over 350 people, and I was just so impressed with their work ethic, the standards, how they treat their employees, and the opportunities that are presented in this community. I know it's a bit of a reach because it's Paulsboro, but basically, KETA is working to bring in like-minded employers, and I'm very, very pleased with that organization. So, it was very fun. The economic forecast for our area is one of growth, huge spillover from Seattle as Seattle grows so rapidly, and I think we're dealing very well with planning for the future.
Thank you. Mayor's Report. Initially, if you read your lobbyist report over the weekend, we saw that no funding, expedited funding proposals were coming forward at all. And so, Monday morning, I called Brianna and we were talking about, okay, so how can we rework our request and, you know, potentially, my idea was, you know, maybe we borrow from our utility fund if we got an agreement to get it paid back. Not two hours later, she emails me and the council that Representative Young is actually the one that got our expedited funding put into the, it's called the LEAP transportation funding, so hopefully that, that bill passes and that our half a million dollars for the pathway will be brought forward. And it was actually in the 2015-2017 biennium, and Mr. Dorsey was having a mild panic attack, but we were told that we would be able to extend that, so, so that we would have the ability to perform on that in 2017 and not tomorrow. So, that was very, very good news. Mr. Dorsey has reported to me too, our 640 Bay Street down here, contractor's been hired for the permanent fencing versus that tired construction fencing we have, and Public Works has made the cleanup of that site a priority down there to, to make it look more presentable. Goal is to have that project complete and the site buttoned up before spring when the boaters arrive. Also, probably, hopefully you noted in the legislative report that the legislature didn't take action on the ability for local government to ban fireworks in emergency situations. The fire chief and I have been talking about that, and with your concurrence, I think we should have our city attorney working on an ordinance for us so that, you know, it doesn't look like we're going to have a drought this year, but we should have that tool in our toolbox in future years when we do have a drought and we don't, we want to have the ability to, to ban fireworks in those emergency situations, so. Ran into a county staffer yesterday and had a conversation about the UGA. They'd met with the county commissioners earlier that day, and it sounds like the county's current work plan is, has the Bethel corridor in entirety back in, but they're not done yet, so. And earlier today, I attended the memorial dedication for Trooper Tony, and it's a great honor to represent our city there. And banner reservations for across the highway, it will be just that, you know, at the fire district on, on March 1st. Their, Fire District is going to help us by taking reservations, we're going to have a revised application. We're still working, and then we will take that process over as of March 2nd, and we're working hard on a new banner policy with the direction we got from the city council earlier. So, that's all I have in a mayor's report. Mr. Clausen?
I received an interesting article today that I just wanted to share with the councils from Road Snacks, and they defined the 10 most boring places in Washington, and this is cities. Number one, Bainbridge Island. Number two, Ocean Shores, three, Edgewood, four, Anacortes, five, Norbity Park, six, Richfield, seven, Gig Harbor, eight, Linden, nine, Paulsboro, and 10, Mercer Island. And the City of Port Orchard is number 60 out of a total of 117. So, we're pretty close to being right in the middle.
So, we're not boring?
We're not boring, but we're not exciting like Seattle and some of those others. And this was actually scientifically calculated.
Sounds like it. So, Bainbridge Island is number one?
Number one, Bainbridge Island.
Mr. Clausen, are you saying we should try harder to be number one?
No.
Move up in the list?
No, I think being in the middle is probably a good thing at this particular one, but they used some of the things people tend to think of as making a city's population boring. Most of it is from the census data, the percentage of population over 35, higher is more boring. Percent of married households, higher is more boring. Average age, higher is more boring, sorry. Percent of households with kids, higher is more boring. Percent of households with people over 65, higher is more boring. And population density, lower is more boring. So, just to share that, we're right in the middle of the pack.
Interesting. All right. Mr. Dorsey, do you have a staff report?
No.
Okay, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I just had a couple of items to report on. First of all, we've had several meetings with the new owners of McCormick Woods, and I'm pleased to report that they're going to be coming in with their first application to start a next phase of development here in the very near future. We also received a notice of application from the City of Bremerton concerning the resurrection of the Sinclair Ridge project, thank you, Mark, and that's a 370-ish lot count subdivision that's being resurrected. It was approved in 2006, and now they're coming in and retooling it. And we wrote a letter, I worked with the mayor and Mr. Dorsey, on a letter to Bremerton just expressing our concerns to make sure that the traffic studies are updated and that any impacts to the city are mitigated. And then lastly, today, we met with WashDOT concerning the signs that you approved, and they're moving forward with a contract to get those implemented, and they said it'll, it'll be a few months.
Ms. Cates, you have a report for us?
I do not have a report this week.
Ms. Reinderson?
I have two things. One, I have laminated my little handy-dandy sheet that Ann McFarland has given us, and I made it two-sided, so if you still have your materials and wish it to be laminated so you can keep it in your binder, please give that to us, and we will make sure it's laminated and put back into your binders. And then lastly, now that we have a full council, does the council, council wish to have a photo, a group photo opportunity? I know in the past couple councils, we've had group photos, so I can schedule that at the next council meeting or a future council meeting so we can have a group photo of the council.
I think it works best when the days are just a little bit longer and maybe before a council meeting when we have some daylight in front of City Hall is-
Summertime?
Yeah, or spring.
Okay.
If we wait another four to six weeks, I think we'll have daylight when we, when we're showing up for one of these executive sessions with the attorney. Maybe we show up 10 minutes earlier. Little sun. Okay.
All right.
Good idea, but let's, let's wait another month or so.
All right, that's all I have.
On to citizens comments, anyone wishing to address the council? Ms. Harmon?
I had two things. The first is going to the UGA meeting at the courthouse, some of the business owners on Bethel were asking that the county start talking with the state about having an exit where the overpass goes over at the end of Bethel, and since it takes, what, 15 to 20 years to get anything done on roads, that maybe if Brianna was also working toward that, that would help with some of the congestion going up Sedgwick if everybody was working together, which, so, that would be something that I would think that you would want to get started soon. And then the other thing, at the retreat, you brought up the issue of not allowing the people that come to the meetings to speak on anything that they wanted on the first three-minute segment, and I find that really appalling in my mind because when you have people here that you consider important, you have made changes in the agenda to let them come up and speak and do whatever, they're, make their presentations and that so that they can leave. But here, you're saying the citizens of Port Orchard have to sit through an entire meeting if they- if they wanted to say some, talk about something that isn't on the agenda. And I don't think that that's right. One of the things that I thought about, Mr. Brian Petro, I think I said his name right, but I may not have, wanted to, he had written a song for people voting for the election and he wasn't allowed at the UGA meeting because it didn't pertain to what was on the agenda. Now that was a packed house with a lot of people, some of them not from Port Orchard. But anyway, the, the whole point was he was the last person to sing his song with maybe 15 to 20 people left in the building. He could have maybe gotten a few more votes and maybe the school issue would have passed. Not saying it would have, but it's just by locking him out at that time, he didn't have much of an audience by the time he got to speak. And the same thing with the gentleman that talked about how happy he was with everybody here. If he'd had to sit through this meeting because, just to be able to speak, now maybe he wanted to, but the whole issue was you got some praise and he might have gotten tired of going through all of this and got up and left if he hadn't had that opportunity earlier. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Merrick, I, based on, you know, Jerry's comment, so I have, we've met with the State Department of Transportation a few times now on the SR16 corridor study that's currently being initiated from the, basically from the bridge at Gig Harbor to Gorst. And in all those meetings, we've been advocating a, a potential off-ramp at Lighter heading north onto Bethel.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Others wish to comment? Mr. Wilson?
Nick Whittleton? I would like, if possible, the committees, I get more out of a committee meeting than I get out of a council meeting and I'm sure you all do as well. It would be nice if there was actually an agenda packet available for the committees rather than coming in at the last minute. Surprise, here's what we're talking about today. It, it really seems like it would be a lot more professional meeting than, than that it could be. Oh, and Land Use Committee, to be determined is what my packet has. Is there an actual date that we can count on for that or is this?
Yes.
Surprise?
Today of the month at 7:30 in the morning.
Great, thank you.
Can you add that to the agenda, Ms. Clark Reinderson? Yep, thank you. Any others wishing to speak to the, Mr. Mahaney?
First, thanks for passing the application, I think. I know that behind Amy's is like 50 parking spots in that one area right there. 30, I thought, if you count that plus the two rows over by the library, there's three, there's, it's not up there right now, but.
North of Amy's.
Right, north of Amy's. I thought there was 50 to count in all six rows or five rows, whatever it is. I thought there was 50 in there when I counted once before. We'll try to find someplace, I don't know where.
For people to park.
Never had this problem before or anyplace else, you know. So we're gonna have to see where there's a place big enough in town to park cars. Because I don't know where there's any. We got a small lot we could put a few downtown if they fixed it and turn it into a parking lot. But we'll try to get, the other part that you guys are trying to, are requesting, try to get it done. Problem is, we gotta get the contract approved, so now we gotta go out and tell them about the contract by being shrunk up and stuff like that and see what we can do about having them come into town. Because it's all bid on with this, what gets written back to them. So I need to get together with Brandy or something and see what's going back so we can talk to them on the phone and, and let them know what's happening. Because it's all contingents on this vote whether the carnival comes to town or not. So, thank you.
Comments? Other people wishing to comment? Seeing none, I believe the meeting is adjourned.